Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the February 12th River Falls City Council meeting. First thing we'll do is stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have a roll call, please, Kristi.
Beerstead.
Here.
Downey.
Here.
Downey.
Here.
Morse.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
Page.
Here.
Watson.
Here.
So approval in minutes from the January 22nd council meeting?
I move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
(inaudible).
Mr. Beerstead.
Mayor and Council, I move to approve payment of bills in the amount of $2,99,489.47 subject to the Comptroller's review.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next move on to public comments. If there's anybody in the audience has anything they want to stand up and talk about now's the time. If you do, just come on forward up here, up to the podium here and sign your name and...
Hi, my name is Jacob Martin. I am a current employee at The Domino's here in River Falls. I'd like to bring up River Falls Days specifically the location of all the festivities this year. It's not suitable for either us as a business or Steve's Pizzeria, Pizza Palace. I'd like to bring up that this location is very unsuitable for our drivers. Having eight drivers on that day, shown from our history records, will have no parking spots. You guys released a statement saying that we'll have two parking spots out front on Main Street. However, that is, that's still not enough. We even struggle on a normal day such as tonight, having parking spots from anywhere from 3:00 in the afternoon to about 6:00 at night. So, on River Falls Days, having one of our main parking spots, that back parking alley, taken away from us, it's very, it's going to hurt our business, not to mention at the same time, our insiders, they will have no parking spaces available to them. So, just wanted to bring that up to you guys.
Okay. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Thanks, Jacob.
Welcome.
Appreciate it. Anybody else have anything they want to talk about? Come on up.
We were, we would like to know if we could get the, he mentioned the two parking spots that were proposed today. Currently, we, the back alley, I don't know how familiar you guys are with the parking in the back alley, but we share the back alley parking lot actually with some residents of the apartments just out the back, our back door to the left there. I don't know if he's here, but there's a, there is a resident there who has problems with our parking in the back already, with the three, three spots if we really stretch it that we do have. It's more like two spots. The getting in and out of that during the proposed River Falls Days location, it does allow us to use those spots if we go in and out of the police parking lot. The foot traffic and things like that with Johnny's Bar being there and having that gate back there is not going to make that a very feasible use of our, of our locations, of our parking. We are already planning on our inside staff getting rides and carpooling to work that day and having the drivers pick them up and stuff like that to help, help mediate and things like that. But with the parking, it being so close to Main Street coming down, I think it's Elm Street, sorry if I'm saying the wrong word, but that's going to make Main Street parking obviously a very busy location for people wanting to hop right into the, into the festival. So, we, we really would like more spots at least saved for us on, on Main Street or some sort of assurance that we'll be able to use that back lot. The foot traffic won't be too, like, too hindering to us, I guess. Some sort of security or something back there, I guess. That's another issue is our back, we have a back door that our drivers, that's where our drivers access a lot if, if they're using that back lot. If they're, if we are to leave that back door open for them, we only have a lock on the inside of that back door. There is a bathroom there that people try to use, inebriated people try to use on a fairly regular basis already, and we think with it being in that back lot, that's going to be an even bigger issue for us, which is kind of a security issue in general. We have people working, we're one of the few people that are open that late at night so, that aren't a bar, I guess, so it kind of leaves you a little bit more open susceptible, so.
Okay. Thanks.
Hi there, Dave Tentman. I'm from Johnny's Bar. I just have a few thoughts as a citizen business owner in town here. First thing is on the location of the carnival. The idea that this needs to be resolved tonight may not be quite true. When asked for the layout of the carnival, we were told that they can't give us what they want or what the carnival wants or needs right now, so I don't think that it needs to be decided where it is tonight. See, we, we came up with a few scenarios that we thought might work. First National Bank could be used for the beer tent and bands, we were told, and Heritage Park maybe for the carnival. Getting lost in my notes. We thought maybe the bands could move up to Maple Street there or the back parking lot instead of it being down at Heritage Park. That way, you could only have to close it for a couple of days instead of Monday to We thought of other areas to explore, being like the green space where Carjus was, down towards East Pine, north of Block. The south lot of Family Fresh, the city lot, but there may or may not be some electrical work going on this summer, we were told. Our concerns are with the deliveries, not only with our business, but the other businesses are going to be going through there all week, which there was a plan. We were told today that there's going to be a through lot all the way through up to the next alley, which would help considerably. We were told we have clearance to use the police lot for the bands we have coming in, so we hope that that is still honored. We counted on the parking. There's 50 spots back there that'll be taken away from not just our business, but the local businesses there. And I'm a firm believer in having the carnival. I think it's great to have things for our kids to do, so we just want other options explored, so thanks for your time.
Okay. Thanks, Dave.
Yep.
And I know Chris will be coming up in a minute, too, and Chris can kind of talk on some of this, so that'll help answer some questions, too.
Hi, I'm Tom Polios. I'm from Steve's Pizza. I also have the same concerns as the rest of these guys. My concern or question is, if they, if you guys have the carnival back there and we get the parking spots, knowing how people are in this town, they're going to steal them. So is there going to be someone there that's going to shoo them away because I'm going to be too busy to go out there and ask them to move? But also, as, as the people from Domino's said, it'll be very difficult to get in and out with the cars we have as well, so.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Anybody else? Anybody else? Oh, yep.
Cheryl from Johnny's. And I just wanted to follow up and say when we were talking about deliveries, we're talking about beer trucks, and we're just one of, I think, five or six businesses on that, in that alleyway that has trucks coming through. And I know Mavericks does Maple Street deliveries, so that I, I don't know how everybody else's deliveries are going to look that week, is, is what we're saying. So that might be on, on Main, or I think they're kind of running out of options. So, some of the, the traffic and the pedestrians at a carnival are usually kids, so I think that's one of our main concerns is maybe moving that carnival to the parking lot down here, that it's more of a secure area. And, and we're not against something being in that back alley, but the logistics of it seem, well, a little far-fetched sometimes, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cheryl. Okay. Pardon me?
Can we come back up?
Sure. Come on up.
I just want to follow up on...
I just want, what was your name?
Jacob Martin.
Jacob.
Yes.
Sorry, Jacob.
Sorry. I'm a...
Go ahead.
I'm a current employer at Domino's.
Yep.
Employee. And then I actually did the last two summers working for you guys for seasonal help here. So, I have an understanding of whoa, of why the location was chosen. I know that in past years, it used to be at the First National Bank parking lot, but then when they remodeled, they said no, pretty much, obviously other logistics. So, I understand that you guys have been looking for more places along that second street where the parade's going to be, so that way, for example, you know, if families are at the carnival, it's just, oh, hey, let's just go right here, we can watch the carnival still, we don't have to leave, no, we can still watch the parade, sorry. We don't have to leave the carnival. So, on that note, we already use, another idea that could be possible for a location would be the lot right by North Hall on campus. That lot is big enough to house all of the festivities here in town, and we already use it for the parade route as well, that is the final destination of the parade route. So, that would, if the campus is willing to accommodate for that, I understand that that doesn't offer the security that you guys are probably looking at the parking lot that is proposed right now, because that parking lot has more of a control access for the cops that Heritage didn't have. So, just another idea.
Anybody else? No? Okay. We'll move on, and Chris Blazier is from the Chamber, CEO of the Chamber, come up and give us a presentation about all this and hopefully answer most of everybody's questions.
I'm not positive I can do that.
Well...
But I'll take a stab at a couple of them.
Yep.
Looks like we've got software updates? Okay. We'll try that. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I want to just take a couple of minutes, I promise I'll get to the carnival, that is in there, so we'll, we'll touch base on that. But I wanted to start with incorporating a PowerPoint for me, a picture says a thousand words, so I wa, I hope you enjoy those as well. So whether city staff is standing, standing front and center with a microphone or whether they're doing magic behind the scenes of placing garbage bins and barricades, every one of them have a smile on their face. So I want to start by saying thank you for all of the support that they provide to make a lot of these events happen. I know we come before you once a year, but I want to assure you that we are having conversations on an annual basis, regular basis with city staff. We do what we can do to make sure that we are providing efficient use of both our time and our financial resources, so that, know that that is happening year-round. Last year, there was an editorial in the River Falls Journal, and I, if you don't mind, I'm going to share just a couple of parts of that. And it's, it's titled "Fun Turns Serious in a Good Way." So the concept goes beyond a good time because it's good business. When people have fun, they stay longer, they play harder, and they come back. Travelers who have visited Wisconsin in the past two years rate the state much higher in attributes such as a good place to live, to start a business, to attain, to attend college, or to purchase a retirement home for those who have visited the state. I feel strongly that people would agree with that here in River Falls as well. So the logistics in regard to street closures, ordinance variances, et cetera, are all outlined in great detail within your letter of support, within your package. So I'm not going to go through all of those items, but I would like to take a few minutes and provide an update and overview of the plans that we have for your consideration for this year. So St. Patrick's Day, Sunday, March 17th, is the day when we paint River Falls green. Starting at 1:00, we'll have a potato soup crawl that will be held at multiple locations throughout Main Street, and then at 6:00, we'll have our quirky but popular, for whatever reason, our fun bed races that go down Main Street starting at 6:00. Throughout that day, we are proposing an open container exception where participants will be able to bring their adult beverages out onto the street going from venue to venue as long as they are properly IDed, they have their wristbands, and the beverages are contained within the chamber-supplied event cups. So that has happened for numerous years, we're, we're recommending that moving forward. This is one of our only adult-focused events, and therefore we've intentionally not incorporated family-type activities, although parents do bring their children out on that day. This year, we will be celebrating our ninth River Falls Roots and Bluegrass Festival in mid-April. We will kick off the event with a wine and beer tasting event, followed by over 40 hours of free live music, competitions, jams, and more that are held at over 12 different venues throughout town. There is no city request or city support requested for this event, but I would like to thank you, the city staff, for keeping our attendees safe last year. We had weather very similar to what we're having right now. The gentleman skiing down Main Street was not today, that was actually last April, so hopefully we're done with that weather. And then we have River Falls Days, what we would consider our largest community-focused summer event. While we will continue with our very popular parade, our running race, live music, car cruise, fun, food and beverage tents, family activities, and more, there are a number of proposed changes for your consideration tonight. So the first thing we'd like to recommend is that we transition the fireworks, which is typically held on Sunday. We would like to kick off River Falls Days by moving it to Thursday. Why, you may ask? I believe that people on Thursday night are gearing up for a fun family weekend, they're trying to find their favorite spot for the parade, they're gearing up for a fun day on Saturday. By the end of Sunday, I suspect, like myself, many of these families are ready to go to bed. So we're proposing we try it on Thursday night. The second thing that we're proposing as a change is we've had numerous conversations with Police Chief Young, and we are proposing that we end the music and beer sales for the festival grounds at 12:30 both on Friday and on Saturday. Previous years, that's been closed at 1:00 and 1:30, but we've been asked to consider this. This will definitely be a considerable negative impact on our financial bottom line, but we feel it is imperative that we maintain a strong working relationship with our city. The third one, which we're familiar with already, is in regard to the carnival location. So as all of you are aware, this property that was previously located just outside along Clark and Cedar Street is being developed with an anticipated start of the summer, and therefore that property is no longer available for use. So in anticipation, over the last couple of years, believe it or not, we've spent a considerable amount of time trying to identify a new location. Believe me, this has not been an easy task. So we feel strongly that the festival grounds should maintain connected to our downtown business community. Therefore, we've identified three different options for consideration. The first one is eliminate the carnival completely. The second one, separate the festival grounds from the carnival location and move the carnival outside of the downtown area. Option number two. The third option is to fit a square peg into a round hole, and that's what we're proposing tonight. We have had numerous conversations. Our staff actually recommended option number one and not have a carnival this year. There's very little, if any, financial benefit to us as a chamber for, for having a carnival in town. We've had conversations with the River Falls Days Planning Committee, board members, and numerous community members, and they've asked us to try to fit a square peg in a round hole. So what you see on your map here is what you've heard about a little bit tonight, is in regard to the, the space that's in orange, which is what we're proposing, would be a location where the rides and potentially some carnival food trailers would, would house. It's located on East Maple Street between Main and Second Street, as well as the city parking lot that is on the south side of Maple Street, behind the fire hall near the alley. So as you've heard already tonight, we've been hitting the pavement, talking to the business representatives, not all of them, we have not been able to connect with, but we've been having a conversation with them. Very transparent, this is what's happening. There's definitely some challenges, as we've heard tonight. We've talked to some businesses that are very excited about this spot and this, this idea. We've talked to some that are okay with the spot, and there are some that, that have expressed some concerns, and you've heard a lot of them tonight. Most of them that were talked about were concerns in regard to delivery access, customer parking, and some of those concerns continue on. We did have a conversation with the police department just recently, and we believe we've identified some of the solutions to those concerns, but as you've heard tonight, there's, there's still concerns out there. A couple of ID, a couple of things that, that were brought up as part of the public comment section, some of the locations that were recommended, we've already pursued and are not options. Like I mentioned before, this is a very difficult decision. I, I don't feel as if it's, needs to be a chamber-led decision, but a community decision. So, I'd be happy to pause here if we want to talk a little more on this topic, specific to the carnival, or I can continue on and we can open it up to questions later, whichever you prefer.
You want to, does the council want to wait till she gets done with the presentation and then start asking questions? Because I'll, I'll have you ask questions now instead of asking them when it comes up on the consent agenda for this. So why don't you finish your presentation, then we'll ask you questions.
So September is where we celebrate all things bacon with our 7th Annual Bacon Bash. We estimate 10,000 baker, bacon lovers will visit our community during the weekend. While they're here, they'll be able to enjoy a car cruise, live music, endless bacon-inspired food options, fun activities, and local craft brew. Last year, we partnered with the River Falls Public Library to incorporate their Kirby Symes Memorial Race as part of Bacon Bash, and we look forward to doing that again this year. At this time, there's no anticipated changes for the proposed upcoming year, but if you could say a little prayer, if you recall for Bacon Bash last year, there was an extreme heat warning, which is extremely odd for September. Someone reported that the bacon was sizzling on the streets. So, whatever we can do to work on that, that would be great. On October 31st, we plan to organize our 3rd Annual Downtown Trick or Treat Event. There is minimal support requested for this with the primary ask of closing East Elm Street from Main Street to the alley. This section of the street will allow nonprofits and businesses that are not located within the downtown area to use that to set up kind of a pop shop, trunk-or-treat opportunity. This event continues to grow in popularity, we expect it will, and provides great visibility to our downtown businesses. And then held the day after Thanksgiving, we encourage residents and visitors to skip the big-box Black Friday shopping trip on the way to the cities, stay here in River Falls and shop local instead. Attend, attendees will enjoy the chili crawl, Santa and Mrs. Claus, ice carvings, and a lighted parade down the beautifully lit Main Street. One slight change proposed, proposed for 2019 is that we end the open container prior to the parade to allow an alcohol-free environment for families to attend. And yes, staying with the crazy weather theme we have going on, umbrella, umbrellas were the new fashion accessory for the holiday parade this year. So within that editorial that I referenced at the beginning, it ends like this. So kudos to the volunteers who put together events like Falcon Frontier Days, River Dazzle, River Falls Days, Bacon Bash, and many more. You're doing more than your community, you're doing more for your community than you know and you thought it simply was all about having fun. So the events I shared tonight with you, shared with you tonight, I apologize, may be organized through the chamber staff, but they would not be possible without the support of countless planning committees, day-of volunteers, and city staff. They are the ones that make these events happen, so I would like to thank them. And before I open it up to questions, I would also like to share a couple thoughts in regard to the room tax increase that's on your agenda later today, if that's okay. So a large portion of the room tax funds the chamber receives supports the countless hours of planning and numerous avenues of marketing the specific events that I shared with you tonight. In addition to these events, room tax also supports initiatives that take place year-round 24/7. Some of these invite, items include maps, brochures, informational kiosks, websites, and general community promotion. These funds have also helped leverage over 70,000 in grants from the Department of Tourism and have helped us receive over 97,000 views of the city on the Kinney River Falls video episode that was shown on Discover Wisconsin Facebook page. So in a closing, I would like to ask your for, support for those two items, both the events that I talked about tonight that are be, being planned in 2019, as well as the proposed 1% room tax increase. So at this time, I welcome any questions you may have.
Questions about either one of those?
Question if I could, just for a couple of questions. Chris, can you go into a little bit more conversation, please, about what was the driver for keeping the carnival? What was the conversation? And I've got another question, too, but I think, talk about why, why you felt, not you, the planning committee felt like you needed to keep the carnival.
Yeah. They, they specifically wanted to make sure that we've unturned every option available, right? So I think we continue to hear as a community that there aren't a lot of opportunities for our teenagers to do in our community as a whole, let alone events like River Falls Days. That is one thing, the carnival, that we feel that our teenagers have an opportunity to participate in. So with that being the primary reason, the conversations have, have continued.
Okay. I can piggyback that.
If I, if I could just...
One other question.
(inaudible).
One other question. So tell us tonight, what happens if the council decides that this doesn't fit our vision of where that carnival should go, and we reject that part of your request? Do you scrap the carnival, as staff suggested? Do you go back to the committee and ask them to consider another site? Do you... What happens?
That's a great question.
That's why I asked it.
That's a great question. We've had considerable conversations in our office, so we're an office of three. We would love some help with this. This is a difficult question. So is it a direct benefit to our members, which is our primary concern? Is it a direct benefit? I'm not overly confident it is. Three of our members are not overly excited about the idea, not overly happy with me at this point. So that's tough. I could very easily walk away and say that this isn't a chamber responsibility, and that if our community feels that we need to have a carnival, maybe we don't have it one year, and maybe there's another organization that wants to bring it back and spearhead it and can find a better location than we've been able to identify to this point. I would say that the planning of events take a considerable amount of time, and while we think that July is a long ways away, it would be extremely helpful for our staff to have some decisions made sooner than later, so that we can begin planning.
Thank you.
What's the annual attendance of a carnival? Do they have annual ridership numbers?
That I don't know. So how that works, we do not pay to have the carnival come. We get a small percentage of the ride revenue. So I suppose we could base it off that. But attendance, I really don't have a good understanding of that.
I think that would be a great thing to find out, and if we could maybe get, whether it's an email to Scott, he shares that with us, it'd be really nice to know kind of what participation rate our carnival is actually receiving, and then kind of compare that to some other communities as well. I mean, are our people and our other people from outside of River Falls using and utilizing that in comparison to other communities?
Yeah. I don't know whether that data is available. The carnival company, we have what our participants have spent, and that's been consistent over the years. But to know the number of people that are spending the money on those rides, I don't know as if they have that detail to know that.
I would think they would have something to do, because if there's a ticket or some kind of, there's got to be some kind of number that they know, how many riders that they have, and how many times they actually run the ride.
Yeah. I will say that I've had conversations with my colleague in New Richmond. Their carnival is considerably busier than ours, and if they were in this situation, they would be doing whatever they could to make sure they could secure a location, because it would be a huge financial loss for them. Here, I would say we profit, we get a check from them for less than 2,000 by the time we incorporate dumpsters and porta-potties and all of those additional things that come with the carnival, power. It's pretty much a wash.
All right. I would also add, you know, I think the carnival is definitely an asset for not just our teenagers, but the families that come down there. I think it's important to find a location that's going to be suitable for all, and obviously, there's never going to be a great cure-all solution, especially with our tight quarters downtown. But I think working with the city, and I think there's some plan that could come out, or some location maybe that the city and the chamber could find. I'd like to see that happen. I don't necessarily, I'm not necessarily in favor of that piece of the proposal, because it does impact considerably the folks that are running businesses down there. Now, yes, their numbers are probably up during that time, I don't know what their stats are as far as revenue, but they probably bank on every year that extra revenue, and if that's taken away from them, and now impacting their drivers and having to find alternate locations and having to walk their pizzas, that's going to impact not just themselves, but their customers. I order from my house, I expect it to be there quick, and now they've taken an extra 10 minutes to get me my pizza, I'd be pretty ticked.
Well, one thought to have, yeah, we have had lengthy conversations, or numerous, I should say, conversations with city staff to work through this. We've had a map, we've got multiple maps within our office on proposed locations. The outcome, knowing the size of the space that's needed, the one space that was identified that we were initially planning to propose as a recommended spot, was the upper City Hall parking lot, as well as adjacent city neighboring streets. We came to the conclusion that that's not the best recommendation for this year with the development that's taking place. So our understanding is that there's a large electrical project associated with that. The way the weather has been, there's no guarantees that that would be cleared out and a spot that we could guarantee. So that was the recommendation from those conversations you're talking about. Since then, we've had conversations with our carnival company, and they have been willing to consider a smaller location. That's where we went back to the drawing board, took another look at the locations, and that's where this East Maple Street came from.
Chris, some concerns were brought up, very legitimate, but was there any, and maybe you said this and I missed it, but was there any discussion on how to maybe address some of their concerns, assuming we have to keep it in that location? In other words, can we have somebody there to keep the parking going and the traffic flowing?
Yeah, so the items that were identified with conversations with the police department, I believe we came up with four different recommended solutions. One was in regard to the concern brought up about, like, the deliveries down the back alley with the semi-trucks. So we were recommending that we make sure that the carnival would leave a clear path crossing Maple Street, so they would be able to continue to go all the way down the alley with some predetermined times. So maybe it's Monday through Thursday during the daytime hours when the carnival is not operating yet, maybe Friday only until noon when the carnival starts, and then not any traffic on Saturday and Sunday. So that was one recommendation in that regard. They're willing to sign two different locations for each of the pizza delivery on Main Street. We don't have the resources to be able to ensure that it's a pizza driver parking there, so that's a legitimate concern that could happen, but that was one of the conversations we talked about. Talked about typically, there is not allowance to use the police parking lot entrance for safety reasons that are understandable. They're willing to waive that this weekend, so that that back alley private parking spots can be used as well. They also talked about issuing, for the residents and for the business owners, a courtesy residential parking permit, so that they could park off-site on the 100 block, I believe. So those were the four suggested recommendations from the police department.
Now, but were those discussed with the business owners?
Many of them, yes. So a lot of these conversations have just happened this week, so we haven't had a great amount of time to absorb that. Have had conversations with many of the people in those regards. The recommendation would be that if this was the location that was determined to be the best spot, we would put together some correspondence, and everybody would get that same information in advance, so that they were aware of the expectations presented.
So I do have a question about the other locations that were considered but eliminated from further consideration. Can you tell us, like, the south lot of the Family Fresh, or the East Pine Street lot here, or the Montessori Building lot? Like, what lots were considered and why were they eliminated?
Yeah. Yeah. It's the year of construction, so my understanding is the Montessori is not available, because there's construction taking place there this year. We looked at the back, the back kind of playground area that's fenced off. There were concerns that they wouldn't be able to get the carnival equipment through that fenced area, so we eliminated that site. We did reach out to the university. We were not able to have permission to utilize the large Lot 1 parking lot that they talked Largest spaces are educational locations. While it may be fine for carnival, we cannot have any alcohol product on any of those locations, so that makes it a little tricky. Family Fresh has expressed concerns with parking during the weekend already, so they feel as if non-customers are utilizing their lot already. So those are a couple that come to the top of my mind.
Was First National Bank considered or approached?
We have, I have approached them. They would be willing to consider having the beer tent area on their property, but we're not interested in the carnival.
If I may just clarify, the chamber, it was the consensus of the chamber employees that it would be easiest just to eliminate the carnival this year, is that correct?
Correct.
But it was the, and there was the committee, and their primary concern was that it offered something for teenagers to do?
I would say the... They encouraged us to make sure we check all of the boxes, and this would be one of the boxes that we have not checked off yet.
Okay, but could that be accomplished if it were not downtown?
All things could be considered, yes. That being said, we've done some general looking at where that would be. That's tricky as well. We talked about Hoffman Park, there's potential construction taking place there in the near There's a city lot that used to be where the truck and tractor pull used to be. That could be developed anytime, so that would be a temporary solution as well.
Right, but it also sounds like after the construction is over, next to City Hall, there may be some options around this building that won't exist for one year.
That would be a decision that you have the ability to make, yes. That being said, that's residential property, and they would be inconvenienced as well. And that's the tough thing, is that if we're going to have the carnival, it's not easy to find a space, and it's not going to work ideally for everybody. And so, is it worth it? I don't know.
I would just make a comment that my kids are grown up now, but when they were between 12 and 16, going down to town in River Falls to meet all their friends and go to the carnival and go to the candy store and walk up and down Main Street was something that they really enjoyed. We felt very, that they were safe, you know, in this environment, and it empowered them to kind of be on their own in the downtown area in an atmosphere that was part of a celebration. So I think there is value in what the committee is saying, and I do appreciate, I do appreciate that, just as a parent. Is the lot behind the businesses and the Fire Department and Police Department going to be used just for trucks and kind of storage of mechanical equipment, or is it going to also be used for the rides themselves?
I would anticipate them to be primarily rides and/or food trailers.
Okay. And the street will be full of rides, is also?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
That weekend, what are we using, what are we doing down here on Maple and in the lot here across from City Hall?
So at this time, we're proposing similar to what we've done in previous years. So with an heritage park, that would be where our main stage and our kids' activities, our large bands, the food booths, and the beer tent. Maple Street, we try to fill that with family-friendly activities. Last year, we had, the water fights were on Maple Street. Last year, we incorporated kind of more in the City Hall Plaza area, family activities that the nonprofits provided.
So a question for Scott or Julie, what would be, I guess, the big reason we would say no to using our upper lot for any kind of rides, and potentially maybe setting some of them out on Maple Street?
I don't think we've said no. I think the committee was looking at all different sites, and they had some concerns about the upper lot. I think what I said about the upper lot is maybe, you know, does it work? But has stormwater ponds in the middle of it? It's right next to single-family residential, so I don't know what the committee, I don't think we've said no as a city to that location. Did we? No, so...
I think it was eliminated as an option primarily because of the electric project.
Is there any electrical access issues in South Lot with that electrical project going on?
There's probably not access issues, but again, I think some...
Oh, would that necessarily...
I'd be careful how I say this. The council's being asked to approve the use of a public parking lot and close a public street, so that's the request in front of you. You certainly have the ability to engineer whatever solution you think you can engineer, but I would suggest to you that you've got a committee of community people that are trying to figure it out. You certainly have the ability to say, and I want to be careful, because we're on the public comment, not necessarily in the approval agenda, but you can say, we don't have enough information, we need more information before we approve this request. I just respectfully will caution you about trying to find a solution that a number of people have been working on for about five years, since I warned them that the lot was purchased by the city for development purposes, and that at some point it would be developed and it would not be available. And I think you started in haste, I think Roseanne started in haste when she was the director, to try to figure out different options. So we have shown as a community, we can get things figured out however, so we can drag electric lines, put up temporary power, connect hoses, work with neighbors to figure out parking. So can we do, yes, we can figure something out, but I would just suggest that this was... The request in front of you as a council is, do you feel comfortable closing the street as it's requested, and do you feel comfortable essentially limiting the public use of that parking lot for purposes of parking, and instead having it public use for, you know, the gathering of the community? So that's what you're being asked to do. How you want to do your job in answering that question is up to you, we'll try to help you. But we didn't, I think it was a pretty open dialogue about, we'll try to help you out. The electric project is a big project, but it's probably not a reason to not do any particular thing, it's just something to consider, like the academy, I mean, there's construction going on all over the place this year, and it's, it's a difficult challenge, and is it a one-year challenge? It might be, but it might be just as difficult next year, so city staff has never given the chamber the impression that we feel that they need to have a carnival. Might have given them the opposite impression. Might have given them the opposite impression, um, that the carnival isn't, it also is, provides, um, takes some resources for us too. But if it's a good thing for the community, we'll we'll do it.
Is the current plan, um, to kind of rope off or cordon off the alley, um, behind the police station and the Fire Department at this point so that traffic could proceed through there?
Yeah, I I'm sure we would work closely with city staff and the police department to ensure a a safe route, yes.
Okay, and and the alley wouldn't be, you know, the rides wouldn't be using the alley or the machinery or whatever would be off of the alleyway itself, is that?
Correct.
There's there's overhead electric in the alley.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
Challenge to, uh, the rides are not gonna, the rides are likely going to be on the other side of the parking lot from the, from the alley because of the elec- overhead electric.
Okay.
Um, anybody else? Well, Chris, I I understand the pickle you're in with this. I know it's, no matter where you put this thing, people ain't gonna be happy. But I think as a city, you know, if we want to promote River Falls as a family event, you need a carnival for the kids. And you need to have it close to where everything else is. It'd be tough to put it up out of town, anywhere over there, up in one of the parks, and expect people to do that, then come back downtown too. I I I'm sure it's been very hard for you guys to come up with the decision. I'm comfortable with your decision. As long as I know, and you keep me informed, that you are working with the police and you are working with the business owners and the citizens behind there to make sure they can get the deliveries they need and to work with them as best you could for any delivery services that they do have some spots that. Granted, I know citizens don't read signs that say no parking. They don't care. But as long as you keep up the open communication with them and try to come to the best conclusion, that's the best for everybody there. There again, you're not gonna make everybody happy. That's just the way it is. I think it's something we need to do and I think you should keep caring forward with what you're doing. So that, not that my opinion matters much, but that's where I am at with it. So I I appreciate the, what you've guys done so far.
So I would suggest with that, the council, if you want to have discussion of that item, that one of you pull it off the consent agenda when we get to there and then you can each express your concerns or approval or whatever, but I would limit this time to just questions of Chris that you might have for clarification.
Do the rides normally end?
That's a great question. Um, it's it's scheduled as close, um, so I don't exactly know. Um, my understanding is that when things slow down, they close. I, to be honest with you, haven't spent a lot of time in the carnival area during that time. Um, I would suspect it would be, uh, eleven, twelve o'clock would be my my best guess.
Well, ten, ten thirty.
Ten, ten thirty.
Think that's reasonable? Just thinking of a spot up here.
Anybody else, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Anybody else got anything for Chris? Okay, we're gonna move on then. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a public comment.
Yep, go ahead.
Um, I I just want to take a minute, um, and make a couple of comments about snow removal and the hard work that the city crew is doing. These events are not normal and are are certainly something that are, um, a challenge to take care of. I know I personally, my my two-car driveway is turning into a single-car driveway pretty quickly because I don't have a place to put the rest of the snow. But one thing, uh, that I noticed, um, I've been on the council for nine years and I've had, uh, comments, uh, made to me, uh, personally about votes or things. I've had comments made to my family. That comes with the job and, um, that that's that's all well and good. I I signed up for that. But I saw a comment the other day on social media that that just disturbed me beyond, uh, beyond anything that I can imagine. There was a comment made, and I won't mention her name, that, um, her street was not getting plowed because she lived next to the low-income housing projects. That could be no farther from the truth. We do not, in River Falls, make decisions about plowing routes based on the economic, uh, class that you are in or the 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 value of your house. Uh, there is a, there is a, uh, plowing schedule. There's a plowing, uh, priorities list that are that are published. I did see staff respond to her. I was glad that staff responded and took care of it. But, um, that was probably one of the most ignorant things I've ever seen in my life and I was really disappointed that we had somebody in this city that thought that we actually decided based on the housing values where we plowed first. So I know, um, I know that, I I for one, I think the rest of the council would agree. Just a terribly disappointing comment and, but I, but I do want to end my comments on a high note and just say that the city staff is doing the best they can. I think they're doing a great job, uh, with snow removal. Please remember to help out the Fire Department and get those, uh, fire plugs, um, shoveled out around in case there is a fire. Uh, help your neighbors out if they need some help with some snow removal. Um, let's, let's do the right things in the community and stay away from the negative things. So thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Okay, so we're gonna close council hearing, open public hearing on ordinance two thousand nineteen dash zero one. Uh, this is ordinance, ordinance annexing certain territory of the town of River Falls to the city of River Falls. Um, this would annex, uh, four point seven three acres on the southeast corner of Cemetery Road Road and South Wasan Lane. So is there any, anybody in the audience has any comments on this? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and reopen up the public, or the the council, and I will entertain a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve ordinance two zero, uh, two thousand nineteen dash oh one.
Second.
Is there any comments or questions on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Okay, next we'll move on to consent agenda. Uh, the first one is a resolution approving, approving the request for city support for the River Falls Area Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau's two thousand nineteen events. Uh, next one is a resolution approving the UWRF Man Valley Land Lease. Um, this is agreement with UW River Falls for leasing property that the city owns, and we've been doing this in two thousand twelve. Uh, next is a resolution approving the purchase of a quad axle truck, um, which replaced our existing semi-end trailer. And the next one is a resolution approving the two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty-one agreement between the city of River Falls and the city of River Falls Fire Department, or I'm sorry, River Falls Police Department Employees Association. Um, this would approve the agreement between the two people through two thousand twenty-one. Does anybody want to pull anything?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull consent agenda item number four, please.
Anything else? Take a motion on the rest?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move approval of consent agenda items five, six, and seven.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and Mr. Page, you pulled four?
Um, well, a lot of public comment today. Uh, it's really appreciated that everyone came down and spoke to us about how this decision impacts their local businesses. Um, I cannot support this resolution as drafted. Uh, that carnival location as described of trying to place a square peg into a round hole just doesn't fit with what River Falls Days is all about, uh, does not support the local businesses. And I personally delivered pizzas at Steve's for a number of years and I can tell you, River Falls Days is the busiest, craziest time, and it's just plain dangerous to put a carnival behind these businesses during River Falls Days. Um, so I would welcome the opportunity for the Chamber to come up with other ideas and or scrap the carnival for a year before they try to put the square peg into a round hole with this decision. So I would make an amendment, uh, just scratching the closure of East Maple Street and the public parking lot from the request. And as amended, I would motion for approval of the resolution.
Second.
So I have an amendment, I have an approval on the amendment? The second on the amendment?
First and a second on the amendment.
Okay.
An amendment would just simply remove that red paragraph and and not grant any, anything stipulated for a carnival at this time and just have it be a matter that could be brought before us with a new location.
Do we, do we have?
I think first we need to put the resolution on the table.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh.
So I will move-
Okay, moving up.
I will move approval of the resolution approving request for city support for River Falls Area Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau's twenty nineteen events.
Second.
And then I would like to enter an amendment as described.
Second.
So any guy, first and a second on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment?
Mayor, can I clarify quick before we take a vote? Um, the amendment is to remove-
The red letter.
Well, I just want to make sure-
Well, from the resolution, it would not remove any language.
Okay.
It would remove language from the request or it would disapprove of that language in the request. Because the resolution doesn't specifically say anything about the carnival.
So I would, I just want to clarify so staff understands the direction. So there's a, there's three bullet points in red underneath carnival.
I take two.
Yes.
I think, um, are you ask, I think you're one, you're wanting to strike one and three, bullet points one and three, but not two?
Two would be fine with me, yes. The use of the gravel area south of Heritage Park.
I suppose you could strike them all because you don't need the housing for vehicle use, but-
If there's no carnival. I would-
It's up to you what you want to do. I just want to clarify.
Yeah, as, I think my amendment as described, just scrapping all three.
Okay.
Tableting the idea of the carnival until we are proposed with a better alternative.
That's understood. So staff would understand-
That's a different thing than tabling is not-
Yeah, I don't mean not table.
Just not included.
Yeah.
But under, staff would understand the amendment is to not approve any closures, parking enforcement changes-
Or locations.
Use of the gravel area or any electrical water for a carnival.
Red letter on page five or fifty-seven of the agenda.
Is that okay?
Thank you for that clarification.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Is it open for discussion?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so so, um, realizing that July is coming quickly, um, my understanding is that that would be something we're, uh, you're not interested in precluding, um, the Chamber from bringing back another proposal?
Not at all.
No, I hope they do.
Okay.
I would, I would actually support that.
I would support that.
I I can't support the location, um, in in talking and in hearing Chris's comments. Uh, you know, this is, this is a difficult, this is a difficult spot for it, certainly is. But I do think, you know, as Mr. Watson pointed out, there there is value to trying to do something for the, for the teenage population and for the kids. Uh, I think that's a wise thing and I, uh, I'm gonna vote in favor of the amendment to remove that. Uh, but I also want to just publicly state, I I really want the committee to come back with another option. Even if it is a temporary one-year option to 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 just buy you some time, I just, I think there's value in that.
Mr. Mayor. I think as as we are talking about different solutions and areas, I I agree with, uh, Administrator Simpson's, uh, sentiment and letting you guys kind of work this out behind the scenes and come back with a resolution. If it did come forward, um, I would gladly look at that and and look for an approval on that. Um, I would be in favor, um, if it worked with city to, um, I'd vote in favor of it being in the lot. And if rides were to end at ten thirty, I think that would be reasonably for the noise and and some, some of the disturbances in the residential area, because I think that's actually within some of our noise ordinances anyway, which you have an exemption for. Um, I think that would be a great location, especially the, um, proximity to the, uh, Maple Street activities and your, uh, um, beer tent, so.
Anybody else have anything you want to say? Okay, uh, for a second, all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Posed? Okay, then all in favor of the regular, regular, uh, resolution?
As amended.
As amended.
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay, next move on to ordinance's resolutions. Uh, this is ordinance number two thousand nineteen-two, adopting, adopting an increase in room tax. And this is a first reading, which would amend chapter three point one four, point oh one oh regarding increasing the room tax from five to six percent effective April first of this year. Uh, the second reading and public hearing is scheduled for February twenty-sixth. Anybody have any?
Sorry, Mayor and Council, we'll provide a, uh, presentation at the the meeting, the next meeting. We'd be happy to take questions if you have them now, but.
Any questions at all? Okay.
Make a comment. I I appreciate Chris, um, Palacios from the Chamber responding quickly on this too. I sent her an email and I believe that some others asked some questions regarding, um, the need for an increased room tax. I do find a benefit in it and I appreciate Chris's transparency um, of her communications and her timeliness of that. She does a fantastic job. Thanks.
Okay, next move on to Administrator's report. If anybody's have anything for Scott or, Scott, you got anything for us?
Well, we're happy to have so many satisfied customers with, uh, garbage and, uh, snow plowing the last couple of weeks, but, uh, no, we've been, we've appreciated the, uh, um, opportunity to learn. We're hoping that we're not, you know, learning lessons to use the next time we have these unusual events, but, um, our job is to make the abnormal look normal, so hopefully we can provide a less, as much normalcy for people as possible. But certainly this has been a challenging sequence of events. Um, I would suggest that your approval of the quad axle truck will go a long way in thanking the, uh, the crew for their work. That's something they they are very excited about. Um, and will help us immensely in, uh, hauling snow the next time we have to do that, which appears to be a a regular occurrence. So appreciate people's patience. It's been difficult to navigate. Um, it will continue to be, um, challenging for a couple of days here as we get cleaned up. We're, our goal, you know, in the last couple of days has been trying to provide passable streets, which is, which is much lower than our typical level of service expectation and I frankly think we exceeded that, um, on almost every occasion, but there's certainly some spots that have been difficult. There's things that, uh, do get missed when we're we're running long hours, um, and we appreciate people's patience with that and and they can continue to call our, um, main line or email us, um, with their suggestions. We're always looking for opportunities for us to to improve the service that we're providing. But we are, we are providing a mass, community-wide snow removal service. So our emphasis is on the, kind of that mass approach to snow removal. We're not doing, um, kind of address-by-address, um, service level. And I know that can be frustrating sometimes, but, uh, certainly I think the guys have, uh, guys and gals have done a really good job of, um, keeping things open. I think our public safety response, um, we've had a number of, uh, calls that are associated with, um, the events. We had a couple of fires during the the very cold temperatures. And I think we, you know, all the way around pitched in, uh, our fleet services kept things running as best they could and um, our front desk staff did a good job of of that and and we're prepared going forward for additional events. We know it's only February, so we'll be prepared and, uh, people should see some improving road conditions, uh, assuming we don't get another ten inches of snow in the next forty-eight hours, so, um, looking forward to, uh, seeing what the streets look like again, bare pavement, um, where we could see it. And, uh, again, we we do, we are happy to take, um, concerns or complaints from the public about, um, areas or, and that they think we could do a better job or areas that we might have missed or something that we, they think we can improve upon and we certainly will do our best to do that.
Okay, move on to, I just got one announcement. I'd like to reappoint Lori Moran through December of two thousand twenty to the Business Improvement Board.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we accept your appointment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.